Wheat Ridge Planning Commission, I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting for this evening. Before we begin, there are a few notes I'd like to go over about our meeting format. Tonight, we have planning commissioners, planning department staff, and members of the public attending in person. Based on the latest public health order from Jefferson County, we're asking commissioners and all those attending in person wear face masks during the meeting. Please do not remove your face mask when speaking, and remember to speak clearly and directly into the microphone. We are also broadcasting this meeting for viewers on Channel 8 and WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. Members of the public who are not present and wish to make comments may participate virtually by joining through Zoom, either on a device or by calling in. The Zoom meeting information is provided on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. When it is time for public comment, and there are three public comment periods tonight, we'll first call on those who wish to speak in person, followed by anyone attending the meeting online and speaking through our Zoom connection. If you are speaking online tonight, please keep background noise to a minimum. If you do not plan to participate by speaking, we recommend you simply view the meeting live by watching on Channel 8 or WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. We appreciate your participation in tonight's meeting and hope to create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue. We appreciate your help in this process. I'd now like to call to order the City of Wheat Ridge Planning Commission meeting for December 16th, 2021. May I get a roll call of the members, please?
Christine Disney.
Here.
Melissa Antle.
Here.
Will Kearns.
Here.
Janet Leo.
Here.
Daniel Larson.
Here.
Jahi Sembai is absent tonight.
Tammy, we have enough for a quorum tonight?
Yes, we do.
Great, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the pledge allegiance. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the order of tonight's agenda?
I move that we approve the order of tonight's agenda.
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? None, we will call for a vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we will vote to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Please note that your printed agenda tonight shows an incorrect date for the meeting minutes to be approved. Item number five on the agenda should read November 18th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting from November 18th, 2021?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, call for a vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Thank you. We will now open the general interest public forum segment of our agenda. This is the time for any person to speak on a subject that is not on tonight's agenda. If you plan to speak on one of the items on tonight's public hearing agenda, please wait until the hearing for that item. All speakers are asked to limit their speeches to three minutes, and speakers may not donate their time. If you plan to speak, please give us your name, spell your last name, and share your address. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
No one has hung up.
Is there anyone online on Zoom that would like to speak this evening on the general interest forum?
I do see three people online. If you would like to raise your hand if you would like to speak during the public forum, please do so at this time. Nobody is raising their hand.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on a subject not on tonight's agenda? Please speak up now. Seeing none, thank you, and I will close the general interest public forum. Our first item on tonight's hearing agenda is case number WZ 21-12. This is an application filed by Jacob Hill for approval of his own change from Residential 1, R1, to Residential 1B, R1B. This is for a property located at 9605 West 38th Avenue. I'd like to again welcome members of the public to our meeting, and it is important that this hearing be conducted in a dignified and civil manner. Our goal is, as always, to create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue, and we appreciate your help in this process. We start our public hearings with a presentation from staff and, in some cases, a presentation by the applicant. After the presentations, the commission will ask questions of staff and the applicant, and then we will invite members of the public to comment during the citizen's forum. I'll turn it over to staff for their presentation.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Stephanie Stevens, and I am a planner in the Community Development Department at the City of Wheat Ridge. Presenting to you tonight, case number WZ 2112, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Residential 1 to Residential 1B at 9605 West 38th Avenue. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. I'd also like to enter into the record three public comments that were received via email from Pearl Lynn Minkler, Carol Matthews, and B. Smith, which were also provided to planning commissioners in advance of this hearing. The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject property is outlined in red on the screen. The property is located at the northeast corner of 38th Avenue and Independence Court, and is an oversized lot. The lot measures to be about 21,065 square feet, almost twice the minimum size required by the current R1 zoning. The lot width along 38th Avenue is 140 feet, and the lot width along Independence Court is 150 feet. The site's currently vacant land, but used to contain a single-family house built in 1898 and was demolished recently in 2020. The property is currently zoned Residential 1, or R1. The surrounding properties are also mostly R1, with some R2, and then across from 38th Avenue is a pocket of R2A zoning. And most of the surrounding uses are single-family and duplex residential uses. The 38th Avenue and Kipling Commercial Corridor lies just a couple blocks west of the subject property. This is a view of the subject property looking northeast from the intersection of West 38th Avenue and Independence Court. The house has since been demolished. The applicant is requesting approval of a zone change to R1B so they can subdivide the oversized lot and build two single-family homes. While R1B is not located in this area, the single-family zone district is consistent with the surrounding area and would not result in a significant change in character. The table on the screen compares the existing R1 zoning development standards to R1B development standards. R1B was determined to be the most appropriate option because it retains the single-family character of the area and no variances would be required or necessary to accommodate future development. In a subdivided condition, it would result in two lots that are comparable in size with the surrounding conditions. With over 20,000 square feet to work with, the subject property could accommodate two single-family lots that far exceed the minimum R1 standards of 7,500 square feet. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on August 19th, 2021, in a virtual Zoom meeting format. Nine people attended the meeting, and notes from that meeting are included in your staff report. Some concerns were expressed about the potential increased density. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outsized agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from internal departments or outside agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to property owners within a 600-foot radius. Three comments were received in opposition via email, and one phone call was received in support of the proposal. Staff reviews rezonings based on several criteria, including consistency with the comprehensive plan. The city's comprehensive plan identifies this property as neighborhood, and the subject proposal does remain in keeping with this designation. City goals that are met with the rezoning proposal include encouraging reinvestment in the property, maintaining consistent character, and creating opportunities for homeownership. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request for the following reasons. Based on the character and land use patterns in this area, the R1B zone district is most appropriate to accommodate the applicant's proposal for two single-family homes, and the zone change should not have an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Staff also finds that the zone change to R1B is supported by the city's comprehensive plan, neighborhood designation. Oops, I'm sorry. I'll just keep going. It retains the single-family character of the neighborhood. Planning Commission will recommend a decision to city council, who will also review the zone change request. If city council approves the request, then the zone change would be approved. This concludes my presentation. Thank you. Myself and the applicant are here for questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant intend to present, or just answer questions?
Just answer questions tonight.
Thank you. We will now poll our planning commissioners to see if there are questions about this application. We will ask the commissioners to hold their comments until after the public forum. Start with Commissioner Kearns.
One question about water. Is this site well water, or is it city water?
You mean in terms of what would serve the new structure? I don't know, I can't speak to what's there now, but building codes would require that any new dwelling unit is required to connect to public water.
Okay, so this would have two taps?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Kearns. Commissioner Leo?
I don't have any of these terms.
Commissioner Disney?
In noticing and reading through the comments that were presented to us, I noticed there were some concerns about access to the property from Independence. Do we see there being two curb cuts, or one curb cut, and accessing the north and south lot that way?
Sorry, my mic. My micro. Can you hear me okay? It would likely be two curb cuts for each driveway individually.
Okay. And would the houses be facing Independence, or facing... I mean, I'm just trying to visualize in my mind how that access onto the property would work, and if it would indeed cause issues with people driving up and down Independence.
The second house would likely be off of Independence Court on the north side. The one off of 38th and Independence, I think it's currently accessed off of Independence Court. But it could be 38th, I believe.
I had read that the developer was not planning on using 38th for access. They were going to close it off and fix the sidewalk. Is that correct? Is the developer here?
State your name, please, and spell your last name and give us your address, please.
My name is Jake Hill. I'm the owner of 9605 West 38th. So it was stated when we went to go try to put this process that the city would like to have full accesses to the potential new properties come up from Independence Court. There is currently an access right now off of each to that lot, off of 38th and also Independence Court. The recommendation was to close off the access off 38th and then have them both access off Independence Court.
And that is still your plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's where we have to go. I'm here to work with everybody, so I'll remember if we have.
All right, thank you. No more questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Antle?
Well, Commissioner Disney asked my two questions, but this is a point of clarification. I mean, I think it sounds like the city is already saying no access off 38th. I live near that area, and I would say traffic along 38th is already a problem. You know, and I'd hate to start necessitating a signal at that area, so at least maintaining kind of the access off Independence Court is important. And I would say just as much as possible, because I know that is a corner site, making sure the driveways are far enough down the hill from the stop sign so that you don't start creating site visibility issues at the intersection as well. But on the structure orientation, are you saying like one might, the front of the house might be facing Independence Court, and the other might be oriented facing 38th? Or do you see front of the house and the garage, for example? Are those both going to be facing Independence Court?
I mean, as of right now, we don't have plans of whether we want to keep the patients, but the overall view would be to have them both have access and visit Independence Court.
Okay.
Okay. From a code standpoint, Commissioner Antle, there is some flexibility afforded to corner lots in terms of the orientation of the home, whether it faces one street or the other. There's not a code requirement that a residential lot take access from the local street, but certainly that's a safety consideration, logistical consideration. So that's why we've made that opinion known to the applicant. So we would like to see those driveways off the local street. We sometimes see like very effective horseshoe designs, right? So nobody has to sort of pull out, but we're sensitive to the deceleration that would happen on 38th Avenue. All of these things would get sort of negotiated and confirmed through the building permit process. And the last thing I'll address is your comment in terms of separation from the intersection. There is a minimum distance that a driveway must be, so that it's far enough away from the intersection. Yep, that is codified.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Antle. My first question is on sort of the process here. This mentions that this is the first time the planning commission will see this particular property. The next time will be, if it's approved, for a subdivision. Is that correct?
So it would only be a two-lot subdivision, and that's an administrative. So anything less, three or less, would be administrative.
And as opposed to a major subdivision?
That's correct. Or minor. Minor would be four to five and come to planning commission.
I see, thank you. The other question has to do with frontages, and if I'm reading this correctly, the lot width parallel to 38th is 140 feet, and then on Independence, the frontage is 150 feet. And if you cut that in half for two lots, you've got 75 feet for each. And when I did a quick look at the city code for R1B, the corner lot shall have a minimum width of 80 feet in both street frontages. That's Section 26207, number A.
I was thinking that was for R1C. Is it R1B as well?
Are you asking why the corner lot has a larger width?
I'm sorry.
Are you asking why the corner lot has a larger width requirement?
Well, not...
The reason...
Go ahead.
The reason that corner lots are required to have a larger width than the mid-block properties is because there's an increased setback from both street frontages. So we need to make sure that each lot is developable, so that it wouldn't be subdivided exactly in half.
And then also to address, I think you're getting at that you think that a variance would be required because of not meeting the standard 80 feet?
Right.
So they had provided a survey, and they did meet the minimum for R1B. So those were approximate.
The 75 feet is for, well, 150 for the two together, right, for a single property?
Right.
But you're not going to cut it exactly in half?
Right, so it'll probably be offset just a tad, so that you'd get the 80 feet on the corner lot for each side.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate clearing that up. Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Leo?
I just have one. Was the intent to split it in half from east to west, or can you do it yourself?
It says east to west.
Go ahead. So the recommendation was to split it from east to west?
Okay, that would make sense, and that's right.
And that creates the access to Independence Court as well.
Any other questions from the commission? No? I will now open the public forum for case number WZ 21-12. This is an application filed by Jacob Hill for approval of a zone change from Residential 1, R1, to Residential 1B, R1B, for a property located at 9605 West 38th Avenue. We ask that you please limit your comments to this case. We typically administer an oath for any participant in a public hearing, staff, applicants, and the public. In this hybrid meeting format, we're administering that oath in a different way. If you comment during the public hearing tonight, by choosing to testify, you are agreeing that the testimony you give will be the truth as you know it. I'll open up the public forum for this case. Are there any in-person speakers who would like to speak on tonight's issue? And I see one, Carol Matthews. Good evening. Would you give us your name, please, spell your last name, and your address?
I'm Carol Matthews, 3851 Hoyt Street, Matthews, M.A.T.H.E.W.S. As a concerned neighbor, I respectfully protest the rezoning of the lot at 9605 West 38th Avenue. My reasons for this protest are, number one, R1B enables a property owner to build within five feet of the property line, which would infringe on the privacy of the existing neighbor. R1B lessens the setbacks to 10 feet on the back of this property, which also infringes on the neighbors. We all have 15 feet or more on our property, and 90% of our lots are a third acre or more in this subdivision. R1B enables a property owner to build on 40% of the property, in contrast to the R1, 25% of the property, which is inconsistent with the rest of the surrounding properties. The builder, Jake Hill of Hill Builders, is unwilling to disclose the plan or the scope of the building, which he would build on these two lots if he is given this zoning change, and which gives us grounds to question his intent. 9605 West 38th Avenue is on the cornea of 38th and Independence, which is an access point to the Everett Junior High and the Clear Creek Green Belt. A 35-foot building built close to the sidewalk on 38th Avenue would restrict the view of the oncoming traffic as vehicles, including school buses, enter 38th Avenue from Independence Street, causing a safety issue. The increased density and probable on-street parking poses a hazard for bicycles and pedestrians entering the street for Everett Junior High and also the Green Belt. In our neighborhood, we love wildlife, our birds, squirrels, raccoons, coyotes, and our foxes and our deer. We hate outside developers who threaten this wholesome environment. We are willing to defend our neighborhood and our wildlife. Jake Hill of Hill Builders, be ready. Our neighborhood petitions are already fixed. When Hardee's tried to put high density in our neighborhood, we needed 1,400 signatures for Fleet Ridge residents to sign our petition. We got over 2,000. Now we can add all of our Everett Junior High parents to this protest. 72% of the Fleet Ridge residents in the neighborhood revitalization study said, "No high-density houses in my neighborhood." Fleet Ridge people will stand together in petitioning and in the special election for no high-density zoning or 30-foot, 35-foot houses in our neighborhood. Jake, if you're not willing to commit to be a neighbor, we don't watch.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your three minutes is up.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in attendance tonight that would like to speak? Please state your name, spell your last name for us, and provide your address.
Ehor Figlus, F.I.G.L.U.S. I live at 9775 West 36th Avenue. My comment is to the commissioners and the whole process. I think that this commission should hold the city to a higher standard of evaluation of any project. When they come before you and they say that this does not impact negatively on the surrounding community, I think they don't really pay attention to what the actual impact could be. And I think the commissioners should require the city planners to take that into account. For example, in this particular instance, you have a small setback, five feet, and you can go up 35 feet in height in construction, according to the Wheat Ridge City Charter. However, one of the things that's not considered... However, one of the things that's not considered and isn't talked about is what does that do as far as casting a shadow on the neighbors to the north, especially in wintertime? I'll give you an example of the detrimental effect. My church is located in North Denver, in the Sunnyside neighborhood. I was driving to church last Sunday, which was a day and a half after we had the snow. Two blocks from the church, they put up the big slot homes. Nowhere else, except in the shadow of those slot homes, there was a patch of ice in the shadow of slot homes. So there is an impact. But the city planners don't take these things into account, and the planning commission needs to take these things into account and needs to hold the city planners to a higher standard to actually take a look at the quality of life of the residents that are going to be affected by changes in zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Figlus. Anyone else in the audience who would like to testify in this case? Please step up to the microphone, tell us your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Raleigh Sorrentino. S is in Sam, O-R-R-E-N-T-I-N-O. 4175 Teller Street. I was just prompted to come up here by that shade issue. If you'll notice, on 44th and Uppam, just west of there, where the shadow of the new town development is on the sidewalk there, that freezes in the wintertime, and the sun does not hit it. And it's just an example of something that's happened as a result of the change in the design of that facility when they added the extra 50 units on the north side of that property. So you might, I'm just reinforcing the concept that Mr. Figlus presented when you create shade on a public sidewalk. So I think that might be a valid concern there. That's all on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorrentino. Anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to comment on this case? Seeing none, we will poll the online audience. Is there anybody online, Tammy?
There are a few people online. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. I see a Mr. Cutler, if you would like to speak, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me? My name is Robert Cutler, C-U-T-L-E-R. We just moved into the property on 9595 West 38th Avenue. We are directly east of the lot in question. I would also like to respectfully protest this rezoning. The fact that there are no plans and no other 35-foot houses in the area really worries me. I have a young son who is under two years old, and I would like, you know, his safety to be protected as far as viewpoints on the street, and as well, you know, one day hope that he will attend the junior high school very near and be able to walk there safely. I also am opposed to the setbacks off of my property, obviously. And his room is also right next to the lot in question. So noise pollution as well as construction is not something that I'm really looking forward to at all. I also think that in rezoning, going from 40% of the property instead of 25% of the property is a big change that is not really addressed when you say that you're going to build two single-family homes there. And I also think that restricting the view of traffic is a pretty big safety hazard coming from somebody who is pulling out of my driveway every day on 38th Avenue. There's a crosswalk there that kind of protects you, but other than that, it is, it is very dangerous. And my neighbor to the east of me also has a young son around the age of two. So really, safety for our children is very paramount to me, as well as the threat of building a 35-foot tall building in the front of us, and the lack of setback and the property density. So yes, I would say that I respectfully protest as well.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Thank you. Tammy, is there anyone else online that would like to comment on this case?
There's a couple other people. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. There's no raising of the hand.
Thank you, Tammy. There are no other comments on this case. I will close the public forum. I'd like to now poll our commissioners to see if their comments or further questions on this. We'll start at this end. Commissioner Antol.
Yeah, I mean, I know we're doing a rezoning here tonight, but I know, I also know, it seems like people have a lot of questions about kind of the site itself and the orientation. So maybe a question for you, Lauren, and then maybe I'd love to hear if the applicant has any responses to the comments we heard. When you have, or Stephanie, when you have a corner lot, is there any flexibility in how you apply the different setback requirements? Or does it just go from, if the houses are oriented towards 38th, the front setback applies? Because I do wonder if five-feet setback from a sidewalk on 38th, which is a major, it's a collector or is it a, yeah, it's a collector. You know, I mean, there's, it's something interesting to consider. Is that really enough? So how does that, how do you apply the different setbacks on a corner lot?
Yeah, I think there's a misunderstanding here on the setback. So there is a 25-foot setback from any street in this zone district, same as in R2. This is why you don't see any building, a single-family or duplex home in this neighborhood, whether it's on a corner or not, that's built close to the street. Now, there was a reference to a prior project which proposed townhomes or attached homes that had a much smaller setback, a build-to, similar to the project Mr. Sorrentino mentioned. The requirement is that any new structure on these lots is 25 feet from 38th and from Independence. So there is no concern from staff in terms of site distance. That is the standard across the city in terms of setback. To your other question about which, then how do we assess rear and side? Because there's a five-foot for one and a 10-foot for the other. It's the exact same standards that are in the R2 zone district, the other predominant zone district in this neighborhood. And we do have some flexibility there. So we, the way the code is written is, you know, the rear is opposite the front, and the front is where sort of primary access comes from. So very likely, if the driveway is coming off of Independence, we would determine that to be the front, and then the eastern property line to be the rear, and the shared property line between the two to be that side setback.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I guess for the applicant, you know, I know we're not really looking at kind of the site itself or the structure itself, but is there some sort of vision in terms of kind of what the height looks like on these? You know, how, how you plan to design these sites? Because we're hearing a lot of concern about height overall.
Yeah, no, I understand the, you know, the height worry, I guess. Again, I literally don't have plans. I'm not even trying to like hold my hand, you know, under closed doors or whatever. There isn't a, you know, a true plan to exactly how it's going to lay out. I wouldn't create a house plan unless I knew what the structure, you know what I mean, what the land could even look like eventually. So to be able to split that. But even to the last gentleman's comments, the five-foot setback even to the east, that is, I don't want my house any, it's not, it's not going to be anywhere close. We're not, it's not going to be this monstrosity structure. Me and my girlfriend, we're looking to build a single-family home. I'm guessing it's going to be around 3,000 square feet, especially with the basement, two-story, part of it might be the third story. But the shadows and whatnot, I don't, I don't, it's not going to be some monstrosity.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Antol. Commissioner Disney?
I drove by the property today. I drove by the property today about 3:15. I didn't see any cars blocking the street. I know the kids were out of school because I saw a lot of them walking around. I looked at the lot. It seems perfectly suited to be subdivided into two lots, netting one additional house. That, to me, does not seem like high-density construction. I feel like we're being very reactive to the zoning. We have no idea what is going to be built there. And the lot itself, if I looked at your website, it looks like you build a quality product. Your aesthetic is quite lovely. So I can imagine that you would try to build very tall slot homes there that are going to shade lawn or somebody's driveway. I think the hysteria around anybody trying to develop in this town is getting really out of hand. I'm for this project. I don't see any issues. It meets all of the zoning requirements, which is what we're here to discuss tonight. We're not to discuss the future. Netting one additional house on that street is not going to create a traffic jam or impede anybody's quality of life. I also feel like because you are subdividing it, it's a better chance that those houses will be owner-occupied rather than becoming a long-term rental, which is a problem in this community. So for that, I am in favor of this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Disney. Commissioner Leo?
Yeah, I just want to clarify the table that I'm looking at with the current zoning and the proposed zoning. And it looks to me like, unless there's a typo on here, it looks to me like the permitted height is the same. So if it is not subdivided, it still doesn't prohibit a 35-foot building. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's 35 feet in either zone district.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. Commissioner Kearns?
We need housing in this country. We're short of housing. And in this community, we need housing. So the only way to get out of this housing shortage is to build our way out of it. I'll be voting yes on this. I think that we need housing availability and options in our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Kearns. And I will add that I believe this project is headed in the right direction. The lot is, seems suitable for this. It meets all the criteria. The subdivision, I would ask that staff make sure when it comes time to subdivide that they are cognizant of the city code and its 80-foot frontage. But other than that, the application seems valid, and I have no other comments or questions. We will, one more time, if anybody has an additional comment? So then let's move on to a motion. Can I hear a motion for this case?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-21-12. A request for approval of a zone change from residential 1 to residential 1B for property located at 9605 West 38th Avenue for the following reasons. The proposed zone chain will promote public health, safety, or welfare of the community and does not result in an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Number two, utility infrastructure adequately services the property. Number three, the proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city comprehensive plan and consistent with the character of West 38th Avenue. Number four, the zone change will provide additional opportunity for reinvestment in the area. And number five, criteria used to evaluate a zone change supports the request.
I second the motion.
Thank you, commissioners. Any other comments, discussion? We will call for a vote.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Tammy.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just for the record, this will move on to counsel. The first reading will be in January, and the public hearing will be in February of next year.
For this request?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is the planning commission hearing for cases numbers WS-210-06 and PBG-21-02. These are applications filed by Uppam Partners for approval of a major subdivision and for approval of a planned building group site plan with 11 buildings on property located at 4,000 to 4,066 Uppam Street in Zone Residential 3. For these two related items, both cases will be opened concurrently, and staff will cover both cases in a single presentation. There will be one public forum for both items, followed by two separate motions from the commission. We'll turn it over to staff for their presentation.
Thank you. My name is Scott Cutler. I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, and this is case numbers PBG-2102 and WS-2106, "Ridgetop Village," which is a request for approval of a planned building group site plan and a major subdivision in the Residential 3 Zone District. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the subdivision regulations, and this presentation. Properties within the City of Wheat Ridge and all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear the case. This is a 2020 aerial view of the property, which is outlined in red, and it's about 1.9 acres in size. Currently contains four single-family homes on about half-acre lots each, which are double depth as well. So it's basically a full city block. It's located on the east side of Uppam Street, midway between 38th and 44th Avenue. There are a mix of residential uses in the area, with a large apartment building to the north, apartments to the west, single-family to the southwest, and also north on Uppam Street. And it is close to 38th Avenue corridor, and the West 38th apartment building is approximately one block to the southwest. Property Zone Residential 3, R3, as are all of the surrounding properties on Uppam Street in this area. R3 allows multifamily and townhomes, up to 12 units per acre. The school property to the east is Zoned R2, as are properties further to the north on Uppam Street, which is lower density than R3. Properties further south on Uppam Street towards 38th Avenue have mixed-use zoning, which is reflective of the commercial and higher-density character of 38th Avenue. The request is for a planned building group site plan under the existing R3 standards. A major subdivision is required to sell each unit separately and to create common area tracts and easements. There will be 11 buildings for a total of 22 units. And then six and a half to 26 and a half feet of right-of-way will be dedicated on Uppam Street to build public improvements, and the plot also dedicates access, utility, and drainage easements. A planned building group, or PBG, is a site plan with more than one proposed primary structure in a residential zone district. Each residential building is considered a primary structure, and because there are 11 buildings proposed, a PBG site plan is required for review by code. PBGs with four or more buildings require approval from Planning Commission, which is why we're here tonight. A review of a site plan application allows staff to evaluate circulation for vehicles and pedestrians, access, parking, building layout, landscaping, and architecture. The site plan is reviewed under the existing R3 development standards, and the purpose of the site plan is to confirm compliance with the R3 zoning requirements. No variances, changes to the permitted uses, or changes to the zoning are allowed or proposed. The standards set forth in the site plan are binding, which means the applicant could not later increase building height or density. And then a subdivision is found in Article 4 of the zoning code, which is a reconfiguration of lots, tracts, or parcels for sale or development. It creates, removes, or defines property lines, allows the city to evaluate right-of-way, and it allows the city to evaluate civil construction documents. civil construction documents. As a reminder, subdivision plat does not affect the zoning or permitted uses, and it enables development already permitted by the current R3 zoning, and would then allow the developer to sell the dwelling units to individual buyers. This is the site plan showing all extents of the site, and the locations of the building are highlighted in blue. Uppham Street is located on the west of the site, and the site will be accessed from two points on Uppham Street, creating a loop road through the site, allowing vehicle and pedestrian access to all dwellings. Each unit accommodates a two-car garage, and there's also guest parking spaces on-site. The two-corner buildings in the rear also have driveways to accommodate four additional cars, or two per unit. And then public improvements, including a new sidewalk, curb, and gutter, will be built on Uppham Street. And the street is also being widened slightly on this side to accommodate on-street parking and enough space for passing on Uppham Street. The proposed buildings comply with the perimeter setbacks required by R3, including a 25-foot setback on Uppham Street and 15-foot setbacks on the northeast and south sides. The building coverage of 35% of the site is well under the 40% maximum for the R3 Zone District, which leaves more room for open space. Each unit will have a private backyard, which is rare for multifamily developments, and a front porch. In addition, there are common landscaped areas, including a community garden at the central part of the site labeled in green, and I'll share the landscaping plan on the next slide. And then sidewalks are on both sides of the private drive with crosswalks to access the garden and guest parking area. This is a detail of the landscape plan, which shows the proposed plantings and common areas, including the garden. Street trees and shrubs will be planted in the yards along Uppham Street. The site exceeds the minimum code requirements for the total percentage of landscaped area. Each unit has a usable backyard that will be landscaped and fenced for privacy. The common open-space areas provide space between buildings and allow for gathering and pet walking. The community garden area acts as a central amenity for the site with adjacent bike racks and guest parking. Each building will be two stories in height and approximately 26 to 27 feet to the midpoint of the roof. The site plan proposes two types of modern farmhouse, farmhouse buildings with a variety of elevation types. The street-facing elevations shown on the left of the screen have additional enhanced features, including wraparound front porches, stone wainscot, and chimney detailing, large-side windows, and window awnings. The front door faces Uppham Street, helping to enhance these elevations and activate the street. Each building interior or along Uppham Street has a front porch and private yard and a two-car garage with a variety of siding types and orientations, pitched roofs, gables, and window awnings. There are two total building types with different orientations, and then also special consideration for the street-facing units, which will provide variety throughout the development. The plat corresponds with the site plan and allows each unit to be sold separately, which each property owner controlling their private yard space. The common areas, including the drive aisles and open spaces, are then platted in tracts to be owned and maintained by the Homeowners Association. Tract A, shown in gray, includes all of the drive aisles, sidewalks, guest parking, and driveway spillover parking. Tracks B, C, and D are the common open-space tracts and highlighted in green. The plat also dedicates a portion of right-of-way along Uppham Street for the construction of public improvements. There's a large dedication at the southwest portion of the site, which allows the city to fully control Uppham Street in this area, which was previously actually on private property. The, our right-of-way dedication is highlighted in red. And lastly, the plat dedicates easements, which allow for distribution of utilities such as water and sanitation to each lot. These easements are being coordinated with the utility districts, and access easements are also across Tract A, which allows access for residents, guests, and emergency vehicles. A drainage easement between lots 8 and 9 on the east side will allow conveyance of water to the off-site detention pond on the Jefferson County Schools property. The applicant has worked with the school district to coordinate shared use of an existing detention facility immediately east of the site. The school district has provided written consent to this arrangement and has no objections. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, and completed an internal review. There are no remaining comments on this application, and both planning and engineering have found the plat to be approvable. The site plan, which includes the architecture, landscaping, and site design, is also approvable as it meets R3 standards. Construction documents are currently under review by the Engineering Division. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to property owners within a 600-foot radius. And comments collected on Wheat Ridge speaks, which we did receive two of, will be received by the Planning Commission and entered into the public record. Ultimately, staff has concluded the request complies with the zoning and development standards and is in substantial compliance with the city's architectural and site design manual. The plat complies with the subdivision regulations, and all agencies conserve the property. The proposed plans will allow the development of the site as allowed under R3 to proceed. For those reasons, staff is recommending approval of the request. Tonight, Planning Commission will need to make two motions. Firstly, one on the planned building group, the PBG site plan, and then another on the plat, which ultimately has to be reviewed by City Council. That concludes my presentation, and the applicant is here as well, I believe, with a short presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Will the applicant be presenting in person or online?
[inaudible]
Great, thank you. All right, I will now poll our Commissioners for questions on this. We ask that Commissioners hold their comments until after the public forum. Start with Commissioner Kearns?
There was a mention of a drainage easement draining onto Jeffco Public Schools property. Is it possible to get a pedestrian access easement to make a safe route to school from this property? Or are we past that point?
I think we're a little past that point, and that path would lead directly into the detention pond, so probably not a good connection point there.
Okay. Each unit has a two-car garage, is that correct?
Yes.
And guest parking is provided with, looks like, four spaces? Or are there more than four spaces for guests?
I believe there's five onsite guest spaces that are, like, kind of shared, and then some of the rear units actually have long enough driveways for additional vehicles as well. And that, that actually exceeds the code requirement for the R3 district, and they're also building on-street parking along Uppham Street as well.
Okay. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Kearns. Commissioner Leo? Thank you. Commissioner Disney?
No questions.
Commissioner Antol?
Well, this is probably just my challenge in reading these reports sometimes, because I just want to clarify that the second piece of this is really getting the space to create that community garden and that open space. Is that correct? Or is it also this back block? Like, it's for the access and the common open space and landscaping?
Are you referring to the subdivision application?
No, this, yes, I am. Sorry. Yes.
Yes, so it's, there's two parts. There's the site plan, which is really the architecture, landscaping site. The plat allows the property to actually be subdivided into different lots for sale.
Yeah.
So they're two separate processes. But the plat also then creates all of the easements. It creates the common-area tracts that will be owned by the HOA. So the plat does a lot. That's, that's the actual subdivision of land.
Okay, okay. I think I'm just mixing myself up. Thank you for clarifying. No.
Thank you, Commissioner Antol. I had a question about parkland fees, and in reading over, and then comparing where we were last time, it looks like the original proposal for 38-some units back in 2019, the parkland fee would have been $84,900-some dollars. And for 22 units, the parkland fee that will be included with, I believe, the permit at that point, the parkland fee would be $44,950. Does that sound about right?
Yep. It's 2,500, about $2,500 per unit.
Okay. And, and this scaled-down proposal, it also includes a scaled-down parkland fee that is due the, from the developer?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. The decision to go with an HOA as opposed to a metro district, is that something the developer makes, or is that something that you guys work on?
The, in term, the city would require some sort of maintenance organization, but it would be up to the developer to decide how that's structured.
Okay, thank you. And at what point does the, and in this case will be an HOA agreement, at what point does the city sign off on that?
I want the developer to probably clarify what their organization is. I may have said HOA, but I don't recall whether it's a HOA or metro district.
Let me ask the applicant to respond to that one, please. And when you get to the microphone, please tell us your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
Yes, sir. My name's Matt Hill, H-I-L-L. My address is 5,000 Quipman Street in Denver. The answer to your question is that the metro district is already in place, and it's a holdover from the previous submission. So that, that entity already exists, and it's already enacted, and we plan to utilize that for this development as well.
And metro district, like an HOA, does have a board of directors that provides sort of direction?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And, well, okay. That was all the questions I had. Were there anything else you wanted to say about this development at this point?
No, we're just really excited about this opportunity to add to the community. We feel like we've presented something that's very much in line with what, what the zoning requirements are. And, and to be able to work with the Planning Commission to get this far, take their feedback, or, I'm sorry, the Planning Department, and now the Planning Commission, take their feedback, implement it into, into our design. And we're just, we're excited about it, and, and we're optimistic that it really will add a lot of benefit and a lot of, and really tie in with the existing community.
Thank you. We'll now open up the public forum for case, cases, or case numbers, WS21-06 and PBG-21-02. These are applications filed by Uppham Partners for approval of a major subdivision and for approval of a planned building group site plan with 11 buildings on property located at 4,000 to 4,066 Uppham Street in Zone Residential R3. We ask that you please limit your comments to this case. All speakers are asked to limit their speeches to three minutes. Again, if you comment during our public hearing, by choosing to testify, you are agreeing that the testimony you give will be the truth as you know it. If you plan to speak, please give us your name, spell your last name, and share your address. Looks like we have somebody signed up here in person, Raleigh Sorrentino. Please step to the microphone, tell us your name, spell your last name, and provide your address.
Raleigh Sorrentino, S-O-R-R-E-N-T-I-N-O, 4175 Teller Street. I'm up here to address this process. I don't need to remind you folks that this project was voted down by the citizens two years ago by 6,000 votes. 62% of the vote voted against this project. What has happened here is somebody has taken this clay and molded around a little bit and tried to fit it in to R3. It's still the same project. And if anyone can, you folks especially, buy the argument that now that it's R3, it's okay. My understanding is you, you have no ability to vote this project down. And that's the problem. The citizens have been cut out of this process. I'm speaking here, I don't have a prepared speech, so I'm just speaking extemporaneously here. But this is a subversion of the process, because you have, if your lives depended on it, you could not vote this project down. And neither could the City Council by virtue of the process. So us citizens, including those 6,000 people that voted no on 2E, would have nothing to say about it. You're not representing the citizens of Wheat Ridge. And we, we know that. This presents constitutional questions. When the citizens cannot speak to their leaders. And I'm up here to communicate that many of the people in Wheat Ridge, a lot of those that voted no on 2E, they don't want this project. They didn't want it in the first place. And massaging it so that it fits into an R3 category doesn't change the fact that as a practical matter, these, these properties have been individual R1 properties for 100 years. And to change it now as a practical matter is, is a subversion. So I don't know how the citizens can deal with this kind of thing. When our representatives, if every citizen in Wheat Ridge asked you to vote for no on this, you're not able to do it. And that, that's the problem, the process. They've, they've molded this into this R3 category and try to get people to make, make it sound palatable. You know, they say a rose by any other color is still a rose, but also a skunk by any other smell is still a skunk. And for citizens of Wheat Ridge, if they were to vote on this again, the projects before you tonight, they would vote no on it. And you all know that. So I'm here to communicate that this may be the start of another process like you saw on 2E two years ago. And
I'm sorry, sir, you're
Note in mind that you heard it here first. So when you vote on this tonight
I'm sorry, sir, your three minutes are
Which you have no choice, you can see how it develops down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Sorrentino. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this case? Tammy, is there anyone online that would like to raise their hand and comment?
There is somebody. He has raised his hand. Looks like, or her, Kylie Ladd. If you would like to speak, you can speak now. Please give your name, spelling of your last name, and your address.
Hi, my name is Kylie Ladd, L-A-D-D, and my address is 4221 Uppham Street. I'd just like to know what consideration has been given to the increased amount of traffic and speeding on Uppham Street as a result of these 22 new developments, as this is already a concern.
Thank you, Ms. Ladd. Is there anyone else online that would like to comment?
Nobody else.
Thank you, Tammy. One more time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to comment, please step up to the microphone. Seeing none, I will close the public comment. At this point, I'd like to poll our Commissioners for comments or additional questions on this. We'll start with Commissioner Antol.
Yeah, I guess I, I do want to better understand, why is it now going, actually, let me think a moment. Can you come back to me? I'm not sure how to answer this question.
Certainly. Commissioner Disney?
I am voting in favor of this project. As it has been said repeatedly, we need housing in this community. This is an exceptionally well-planned, well-thought-out development that answered a lot of the objections to the first project. It's smaller. It meets or exceeds the requirements for R3. The architecture fits in nicely with the aggro-rural character of Wheat Ridge. It has got a lot of landscaping, a lot of green space, which you don't typically see in developments like this. And I drove down Uppham today and drove by the four properties in question. And while they may be R1 now, actually, they're R3, they're not R1, this development complies with the zoning code. I think it's exciting. It's going to make that neighborhood look I think it's exciting, it's going to make that neighborhood look a lot better. The four remaining houses are in very bad disrepair, the lots look junky. Sorry if that offends anybody, but when I look at this compared to what's there now, it is absolutely an improvement, and it's going to give people the opportunity to own housing, which is getting very hard to come by, and so for that reason, I am voting yes on this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Disney. Commissioner Leo?
Yes, I think this fits very well into that neighborhood, being that it is, it is an R3, and I, again, think I agree with Ms. Disney that it would be an aesthetic improvement to that area. Also, I do like the parking plan. Generally, when you put in two-family units, you have parking issues, but that looks like it's really been well planned out.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. Commissioner Kearns?
It's a, it's a high-quality development, it, it doesn't look like, it's not massive by any means, we're not talking about three stories or more, this is, these are two-story buildings that, that look like houses and are essentially townhomes. Yeah, the parking looks great, the, the access plan looks great. I wish there was a little trail back to the school. If I was a kid living here, I'd probably want to be able to hop that fence and play ball, but that's okay, it's just a quick walk around the block to get there, so looks good to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kearns. I did have one question that occurred to me, and it has to do with that cutout on Uppam. Tell me a little bit more about that, I'm, I'm not seeing on this rendering, but at the southwest corner of the property, there is a, is an indent or an outdent into the street, and, and then there'll be additional parking spaces, the street will be widened for additional parking. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
You are, yes. Uppam Street is unique in that a lot of the original lot lines actually went to the center of the street, if I'm remembering correctly, and so the street, even though there was public easements across it, was actually on private property, and that was the case for the southern house of these four houses. The street was actually not within city right-of-way. So with that dedication, the entire street will then be in the city right-of-way.
And, and how does, how does that, that look on, you don't have to put up a drawing, but is, is there actually a cutout, is, does the curb indent into the street?
Um, no, not right now, no.
So, so we're not talking about narrowing the street there, the street will stay the same width?
The street, actually, if you, on this plane that's on the screen, it will widen slightly along this property. I don't know how much wider, but Uppam Street is pretty narrow, and widening it in this area will allow for on-street parking with room to pass. Right now, if you, street parking on both sides, it's pretty tight there, so this will actually allow more room for the on-street parking, and a wider sidewalk, too.
Thank you. So with the two-car garages plus the additional parking places on the property, plus additional parking on Uppam, or the existence of parking on, on Uppam, parking really shouldn't be an, an issue at, at this point, so that was a, kind of a nice revelation as I read through this. The, I was impressed with the landscaping plan and the, the arrangement of the track A to allow the sort of driveway through there. It, it indicates to me that there was a lot of, a lot of thought, and probably a lot of discussion back and forth between the developer and the planning staff in creating a, what looks like a, a modern residential development. The fact that we're talking about townhomes as opposed to rentals, I think, is a big plus, and I agree with the commissioners so far that we have, we're looking at a, a development that will fit in with the neighborhood and will add, will benefit the community. With that, are there other questions or comments? I'm sorry, Commissioner Rantall, you did have a comment.
Well, no, I answered my own question by rereading something, but I, I did want to make a comment, which is largely just echoing what you've already heard from the other commissioners, and I am pleased to be seeing these types of developments come into Wheat Ridge, because I think we need to continue to offer kind of a diversity of housing types in our community. Not everyone can afford a single-family home, not everybody wants to live in a, you know, multi-use building or an apartment, and the way this is designed, it still provides kind of a residential family feel, you know, there's a lot of nice landscaping, open space, community gardens, so I think we're keeping with the overall character of what we've established in our neighborhoods, and so I, I'm really pleased with what I've seen here today.
Thank you, Commissioner Rantall. Are there any other comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Kearns?
One more thing, we can deny projects, we have the option to deny projects based on whatever we deem unfit, and that recommendation goes to city council, so just to clear that up.
Thank you, Commissioner Kearns. Other comments?
Mr. Chair, may I respond to the one question that we got about traffic and speeding, just for the point of record? This project did not meet the threshold that warranted a traffic study based on the number of units. I do think one of the things that we'll be seeing on Uppam, while Wadsworth is under construction, is some increased cut-through, and we are aware of that, and our police department is aware of that. We do have speed trailers that we can use particularly during this construction project, right? Uppam is the most obvious alternative between 38th and 44th. We do have a neighborhood traffic management program, so we can try as a city to, to understand what the issues may be after that construction is done and things settle back out. There is a fire station on this street, so sometimes we are limited in what we can do in terms of speed bumps, because the fire station is on this particular block, but it's certainly something that we're aware of. We know that there have been added apartment units on both ends of Uppam, so I just wanted our commenter to, to know that we, we've heard that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, we will call for a motion. Is there a motion on this, these, we'll go, I'm sorry, we'll go to the first one, and we'll ask for a motion on the first one, WS21-06, and that is the, the subdivision?
I'll, I'll move to recommend approval of case number WS21-06. A request for approval of a major subdivision on property located at 4,000 to 4,066 Uppam Street and Zoned Residential R3 District for the following reasons. All requirements of the subdivision regulations of the zoning and development code have been met. All agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense. And I'll add the, will add the following conditions. The applicant shall pay the required fees in lieu of parkland dedication at time of building permit, and number two, the developer shall enter into a subdivision improvement agreement and a lot sale restriction covenant agreement with the city at the time of reclamation of the subdivision plat.
Is there a second?
Second.
If there are no other comments, we will call for a vote. Thank you.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Tammy. Now we will call for a motion on case number PBG21-02. This is the, the building plan?
I'm, oh, go ahead. I move to approve case number PBG-21-02, a request for approval of a planned building group site plan on property located at 4,000 to 4,066 Uppam Street and Zoned Residential 3, R3, for the following reasons. One, the proposed plan complies with the zoning and development code and is not contrary to the general welfare of the immediate neighborhood and the economic prosperity of the city. Number two, the proposed plan is in substantial compliance with the city's architectural and site design manual. Number three, utility infrastructure adequately serves the property.
I second the motion.
Are there any other comments on this case? And this is a reminder to the commission that our vote here is, does not require review by the city council, and our decision on this is final. With that, we will call for a vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Thank you, Tammy. Move on to our next item, new business, and I would like to mention that at, at our meeting on October 21st, two members of the planning commission asked to step down. As of this evening, appointments for the two vacant planning commission seats have not been announced. We encourage anyone living in Wheat Ridge District 1 or District 2 and interested in contributing to how we keep our city running, please consider applying for planning commission. Information and an application can be found on the city's website. Now I'll turn it over to staff, Lauren, if there are any new business things we'd like to, we'd like to discuss tonight, we, we are welcome, welcome to hear it.
Yeah, just a couple updates from me, so we will not be having the January 6th planning commission meeting, so get an extended holiday break from your duties. We do think we will likely need the January 20th date, so please pencil that in, and then we'll confirm that with you in a couple of weeks. I do want to introduce our colleague here tonight, he didn't have to say too much, but we have Rocky Max Belka. He is a civil engineer who joined our department maybe two months ago? Has it been that long? Not quite, maybe? He comes to us from the private sector, Dave Brosman, who was our prior development review engineer for about 30 years, he retired, and Rocky is here managing the development review functions and engineering, so you'll see him either in person or on Zoom when we've got engineering-specific questions. Rocky's children attend school in Wheat Ridge, so he's familiar with the, the community. Happy to have him here. In terms of development updates, just a couple, no, no announcement on Lucky's to share. I did ask Steve Art today. The zone change that you saw maybe a month or two ago for Clear Creek Crossing for that second phase of the multifamily, that zone change was approved by council on Monday night, so you'll very likely see that specific development plan in maybe February or March. You've maybe noticed that the hospital has gone vertical. There's also a lot of contractor trailers out there, and a big white tent that we were happy to see stayed standing despite the winds the other day. Those are all temporary structures, the size of this construction project is sort of unprecedented for us, so we just needed more sort of shelter and staging space for the contractors, essentially, so that won't stay, but it'll be there for the next few years. And then the last thing I want to mention is, as a code amendment follow-up, I left this image on the screen, because you'll recall that a couple years ago now, we actually did a code amendment related to sideways-oriented townhomes. Essentially, a proactive amendment to make sure we didn't see slot home-type development, and we use that code in this project, and going back and forth with the developers, Scott's comments back and forth particularly called for those four porches, you can sort of make out the outline of the porch and the column, so they are porches that cover two-thirds of the width of those units that are street-facing. So that is not something that we would have had the code basis to ask for if not for that, but we think it's a really good example of a project that is really street-oriented, neighborhood-oriented, thanks to that change. That's everything we have, happy holiday season to everybody. We won't see you till next year.
Thank you, yes. Do the commissioners have any interesting questions to ask about what's going on around Wheat Ridge?
I just have a comment, I just want to thank staff for the thorough packets and the information that you provide to us. It's well put together, very professional, and it really makes my job easier, so kudos to everybody on staff.
With that, and there is no old business to go over, as far as I know, correct?
Correct.
That's correct, thank you. We will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll call for a vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
We are adjourned.[1776.42]